Give me one second, I forgot to open up my meeting.
It's going to update now.
Oh, I had, I had updates, they finally stopped. Thank goodness. Just one second. Okay, whenever you're ready. All right, let's call the workshop for November 18th to order. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Woods?
Here.
Councilmember McKenzie?
Here.
Councilmember Nordby is absent, councilmember Schwerer's absent, Mayor Mongi?
Here.
Thank you very much. May I get a motion to adopt the agenda?
I'll, I'll make a motion.
So, councilmember McKenzie, second?
Second.
Want to come at your Woods? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor, we got one topic on the agenda this evening. Through conversations throughout this budgeting process with myself and Dan, just some concerns that have come up and some of the things that we've been talking about, looking for priorities and what you guys are looking for. There's lots of things happening, we have changes coming with the potential state deficit and looking at our SIP expenses and the requests that are on them. Trying to roll in the information from the retreat that we had earlier this year and just kind of bring all this stuff together and have a good conversation about planning and what our fiscal priorities are, what they're going to be. So, with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Winnick, our Finance Director.
Thank you, City Manager Frandl, thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. Tonight, we're going to talk a little bit about and try to get some direction from City Council on fiscal priorities. A lot of the material that you're going to see has been shown throughout our budget process, but I kind of go back to that retreat and then our last meeting when we had all the department heads here and we looked at the management action plans that were a result of the retreat. And in that retreat, and you heard me say it in the, in the last workshop on the management action plan, that there really is a different viewpoint from City Council members to staff. And, you know, and that really, in a nutshell, is that, you know, City Council members have a much bigger vision for the city of North St. Paul and staff is more concerned of things, I'm, I'm going to say more of a day-to-day basis component to it. Kind of want to hit you with the impacts of what we're doing and so you clearly understand where we're at. And then I have some activities where there's a number of questions that I need to get from you that'll help us decide on what we bring back to City Council, what type of directions we go as far as our planning on our capital improvement plans, our operational budgets in the future and so forth. But I'm going to start off with just a kind of a quick question and I'm going to ask Councilmember Woods, did you by chance get your truth in taxation or your proposed 2026 property tax?
I did.
And did it go up about maybe 6% total bottom line?
Honestly, I did not look at it.
Okay. But I just wanted to kind of tell you that I do have your property taxes, not your, your current one because they're not online yet. I was kind of hoping that they would be ready today. But I took your 2022 and your 2025 and just kind of want to give some information that I think is kind of startling. And, you know, part of, I want to give you this information is because the next meeting we have on December 2nd, we're going to have the truth in taxation. And so by that time, the residents of North St. Paul should have received their proposed property taxes. We're going to see Ramsey County, 9.75% levy increase, we're at 8%. I think the school districts only at about a 2.2%. But for like a median value home, you know, they're going to see about a 7% increase in the bottom line of their property taxes. But, I want to kind of use yours and yours is pretty close to the median value of the city of North St. Paul. So, in 2021, the city portion, the tax for the city was $861. Your total bottom line was about $3,424. In 2025, and this is including probably another 6% increase that we're going to see in 2026, but in 2025, the city portion was $1,425, a $564 increase. Over that time period, that results into a 66% increase in your city's property taxes from 2021 to 2025. The bottom line increased from the 3,400 to 4,400 or $1,032 increase, which is a, results in a 30% increase overall. So, obviously, I think those are staggering numbers. Property notices came out, I got contacted by a resident in the city of North St. Paul. They're on the opposite high end of the spectrum, but they had an 18% market value increase in their property and their property is a, have a higher value than our median value increase. The bottom line, their property taxes for, proposed for 2026 total is going to be increasing 25.5% from where they were at in 2025. Again, those are staggering numbers and that's kind of what the emphasis of tonight's discussion is really, kind of to, to really, for us to really know everything. When we look at kind of provided by, this is provided by Ramsey County and we'll also be going over this in our truth in taxation, that for the city of North St. Paul, we've got the total number of parcel, parcels are just underneath 3,800. That 9.9% should see a decrease or a zero increase in their property taxes. 56, almost 57%, will see a 0 to a 10% increase in their property taxes. 27% will see a 10 to 20% increase in their property taxes. 4.6% will see a 20 to 30% increase in their property taxes. And then the big outlier is a 1.7% will see greater than 30% of a property tax increase going into 2026 for the proposed part to it. Now, that isn't all due to just the city of St. Paul and even the city's property tax levy that you see a 66% change. There were some different factors that Ramsey County did a little bit differently. Our Economic Development Authority up until last year was always in the bottom line that would show in property taxes as others. They moved that up to the city's line. The comparison from last year to this year is accurate at an 8% levy increase, which we've shown in what we're proposing at this point in time to, to approve in December. And then, as you're all aware, in that whole timeframe from '21 to 2025, there were some significant market increases. But the market increases didn't happen across the board, they hit higher in residential properties and not as much in commercial property, which we don't have a lot of anyways. But what that ends up doing is that of what commercial property we have in comparison to residential, it shifts the tax burden from commercial to the residential. So, they get kind of a double whammy that's occurring onto that and that's where you're seeing those big increases. So, I'm going to leave right there and kind of just say that there's been a lot of impact for our residents here. And as we go through the information that we've seen before, we're going to be asking for a decent levy increase year after year after year for at least the next nine years. Part of it is, it's not your decisions that put us in that position, your decisions have been to try to get us out of where we have been at. And so, I don't want this to be just looked at as a doomsday component, I want you to be aware that it is having an impact on our residents. But, there's a lot of positive things that the City Council has done in the time that I've been here. We have developed a very comprehensive capital improvement plan. We are trying the best that we can to be able to afford or to fund that. That's what's really driving our levy increases. It isn't necessarily our, just our, I'm going to say, our day-to-day operations in our general fund. If you remember, in this year, we're probably only having about a $26,000 increase in, in our, in our operations outside of our personnel costs. In the time that I've been here, we've added FTEs, we've added a number to our police force, we've added to our fire department, we've added to our public works and so forth. I think right now, we are in a very good position from a, you know, from a, a staff count. Last year, you know, our city manager, and then it got approved by City Council, did a wonderful job of contract negotiations, made sure that we're matching the market to make sure that we're retaining the talent that we have today and that we can attract the talent that we need in the future. All of that's been included. And then, planning, we've done an excellent job of planning. We've put ourselves in a better overall financial position with policy changes as far as our fund balance policy, where we're in the general fund over 50%. We're going to continue to do that, we saw that, that resulted in an upgrade in our bond rating from AA to AA+. So, we're seeing a lot of positive things that we have done. But I kind of want to walk you through the information that's been presented to you before and we're going to kind of just look at what our future CIP commitments are, some of the other factors that have been shared, review of the '25, '26 city goals, I'm not going to really go through a lot of those. And then there's activities. And the activities are more for us to hear from you, to give us some insight of how we set, I guess, our direction for department heads. We have to realize that as we come to the conclusion of '25 and we have the '26 budget pretty well all lined up and it's been presented, we're going to be starting the '27 budget and we're going to be starting the next 10-year capital improvement plan and looking at that. So, we kind of want to be able to set that direction with the understanding of what is City Council really looking at and looking for. And then, if time permits, we're going to, we're going to have a little example and that we need a little direction so we're all on the same page. So, as we, as we looked at our '26 to '35 capital improvement plan and we look at the funding sources, there's a lot of money that is being scheduled to be expended, over $100 million. And the larger parts of that are, are definitely in your street maintenance, it's going to be in your bonding for, for streets, on your major reconstruction projects, you're going to see a lot in our facilities and you're going to see a lot that is, that is earmarked into our parks system. We have levy amounts that are identified over a 10-year period, but I want to make a note that the capital improvement plan still needs to be adjusted to avoid cash flow issues or City Council needs to approve temporary loans. And then I'll show you an example of that a little bit later. As you go through this, there's some of these funds that'll end up having cash flow issues, which means we need to adjust some of our projects in, in future years, probably outwards. Or, City Council has the authority to do temporary loans. That isn't something that I ultimately recommend City Council do, but you have that authority to do that. And then the other component to it is, none of this includes potential for maybe some grant funds that can help offset that the, the ultimate cost or the, the net cost that the city would end up having to pay for. But, as we went through and looking at this, right now, we're, we're looking at a year after year of about a $250,000 increase for street and streets debt, debt. We're looking at almost a percent for parks, we're looking at just under 2% for asset preservation, which is our facilities. We take that all together and this year, it means about a 6.01% levy. Obviously, as our levy goes up, if we keep those dollar amounts the same, the percentage will go down. But ultimately, we're going to be starting pretty close every year for the next nine years at a 6%, not including cost of living increases, not including health insurance costs, not including if there's other items that come up and that we need to be able to fund. And so, that's part of where this, these activities are, to try to get your sense and feel from you of, do we keep adding and adding and adding? Or do we say, hey, this is it, this is what our plan is, if there's some things that are added or additional to our capital improvement plan, which there will be, life is dynamic, things continuously change, that we need to hear from you, how do we prioritize those? And so, it means, hey, if we need extra money over here, it means where do we get that money from? And then, we have to maybe delay something else to be able to do that. Now, again, another very positive thing that we've done, if we look just, and I'm just going to look from, from pay '24 to pay '26, those are the payable years, you know, our levy that we have for the city, HRA and EDA, has gone from just under 7.1 million to just about, just under 7.2. Not a lot, it really hasn't increased in the last three years. Yet, the driving factor has been that we've increased our levy for streets, parks and facility levies, not because of decisions that were done by you, but to correct some of those decisions that were done in the past and make sure that we're positioning ourselves to take care of our, I call it, our infrastructure, that we've gone from about $250,000 to $1.4 million to be able to afford those things. So, that's a very positive thing. Yes, it's had, obviously, it's had an impact on our residents as far as our property taxes, but as far as the city's position is that we're ta, starting to take care of the things that we need to take care of. And we're not the only city that's in this type of a position. And then, because of that, if we look at that plan, our capital improvement plan, it's also going to have impact on our, our enterprise funds, our water fund, our wastewater fund, our electric fund. I don't believe our electric fund's going to need to have the 2.25% increase, I think it's going to be very minimal if we're going to need anything coming up in the, in the future years. Our surface water's going to be hit and they're all going to be somewhere in the range of about 6% annual increases that we're going to end up having to, to do and we're going to have to start that in 2027. And then the solid waste fund, our garbage collection, you know, that'll have to be increased, right now, we're, we're drawing down our fund balance, we're developing, we're, we're almost at the, the point of bringing in an RFP for City Council's consideration and get out on the streets where we may end up having a different vendor, or maybe it's the same vendor, but we'll have a different contract going into, I think, September 1st of next year. At that point in time, that's when we would adjust the, the rate is for the 2027. So, when we look at this, we're going to be challenged year after year, again, for the next nine years, to hold our levy increases between 8 to 10%. Why? We're starting off with that 6%, we're going to have cost of livings, we're going to have insurance increases, we're going to have operational costs that are increased, so we're going to have a struggle. It's going to be, our department heads are going to be tasked with holding us between 2 to 4% increases year over year over year. Some other factors that we had talked about, there's been a lot of conversation, you know, from the, this, at the state level, that they're projecting, you know, a deficit going into the biennium of 2028, 2029, that'll have an impact on us, potentially. It would have an impact on some of the aids that we give, that we receive. One of the biggest aids that we receive is a local government aid, where we receive in a little over $1.6 million. If there's reductions into that, that means we have to come up with, where do we get that money from to fill that gap? And then, you know, the federal budget changes, you know, the, I think they, it was termed the big beautiful bill, did make some major changes to the SNAP program and where tighter qualifications and restrictions for how long someone can be on the SNAP program, in addition, shifting more to the local level or the state level. Well, if the state's going to have, you know, receive less federal dollars and they're going to have a budget deficit, they're going to be in a big challenge, they're going to be looking to cut something and that's going to more than likely be aids that they're giving to local government. Counties are going to be hit hard, cities are going to be hit hard. And I think that's why you're seeing, you know, like, our county, Ramsey County, in the past has been holding their increases somewhere 3, 4%. Now, you're seeing in the biennium that they're, they do a, they do a two-year budget cycle, they're looking at 9.75 for this year and I think it's seven and a half for 2027. Why? Because they anticipate and they already have, know the projections of what they're anticipating of cuts in that SNAP program that's going to end up hitting them. So, you know, it's just a question that comes out there and says, hey, what happens if we lose a percentage of our local government aid? What is that amount? And then our question's going to be, what do we do to adjust to be able to do that? Now, in the last legislative session, in the Senate, they were actually discussing, well, actually, both parties were discussing a reduction in local government aid, nothing materialized into it. The Senate had proposed about a 3.1% reduction, which, if we look on our, our chart, would be about $48,000, I think that 3.1 actually comes out to about $50,000 reduction. So, when we look at that, we're going to see that we would have just there, another 0.7% levy increase just to cover the loss of that local government aid if it were at the 3.1. But if it were higher, you obviously can see what that levy increase potentially could be. And then, the question is, how do we adjust to that? Remember, starting a base at 6%, cost of living, insurance, his operational costs, we're in that 8 to 10, throw on top of this, now we're pushing ourselves even higher? Do we go even higher? That's the question that comes back to City Council and trying to get that insight. We've already seen what the impact has been on a, you know, a median value home from 2021 to 2025, significant. The city goals, number three, financial stability and cost management. That was in the past, number four, it's moved up out of this last retreat to number three, something that's very important. Yes, number one is infrastructure and public safety, but the question is, how do you balance those two? In many ways, there's a lot of conflicts between those two. To appropriately do your infrastructure needs money, but money means I'm in, I'm increasing the levy more and more. So, there's, there's competing components that are continuously going through. And again, that's why I have a series of questions to try to get some insight from City Council and some direction. So, now, we're going to start some of these activities, kind of brainstorming. And the first one is, and I'm going to give little post-it notes and some pens and we're going to kind of go through and the first question that's being asked, well, I'll stop first of all, are there any questions as we've moved to the informa, through the information that we've, that, you know, to, to right now, to this point?
I don't think so. I mean, you know, costs are going up everywhere, so.
I get to walk around, this could be fun.
What was that guy, the dating game with the big long microphone? What was his name?
Come on down. I'm going to give our City Manager one too.
A little Wink Martindale action. Thank you.
So, the first question that's being posed to you is, what are the top five most critical needs facing North St. Paul? I'll give you some time to kind of think about that and then we'll have kind of a, we'll share our information, kind of have a little discussion. And again, this is really for department heads, City Manager, department heads to kind of get that next level of insight of, of what is City Council thinking? And again, we have different viewpoints, so we want to make sure that we can align ourselves in the future with your thoughts, your priorities. All done? Quite impressive. All right, so who would like to volunteer to kind of share?
They can go first.
They can go first?
I'll go first. I'll do it. Rising costs, infrastructure, I think, is big. Public safety, of course. Just higher bills for our residents overall. And part of it, too, I think, the biggest that most people are getting hit for right now that adds to is our homeowners insurance that everybody's getting hit with. So that brings a lot less money for everybody else. So everything's expensive, and it's all really stretching.
Absolutely. Food costs continuously are rising. Yes. And that's kind of where I wanted to show where the property taxes have gone, because we're a contributing factor to all of that. And in the future, there is uncertainty. If you don't mind, I'd like to take your post-it note after you've shared, because then I'll summarize this information.
Hope you can read it.
And share it with all of our department heads. Who would like to? Very good. Excellent responses. See, that gives us insight to what we need to focus, how we're going to deliver things in the future, where we're going to make adjustments, and adjustments in our capital improvement plans and our operationals. So who would like to go next?
I can go.
Councilmember Woods?
So, I put, you know, controlling expenses. So how do we control the expenses? Kind of along, mine was a little bit more broad than his was very focused. Infrastructure maintenance, so maintaining the buildings that we have and making, you know, catching up on a lot of the maintenance that we've foregone over the several years. And then one thing, responding to the median age of our North St. Paul population, you know. We are in a position where a lot of our residents are, a lot of our properties are being sold to younger families, you know.
Good point.
And so, a lot, the money, I shouldn't say, the ability for them to afford, you know, increases in taxes and insurance and things like that may not be there, so.
Very good. That's a very good point. And you see it on the opposite side of the spectrum, too. Those who are retired, and you're on more of a fixed income, and you're not going to have the bigger increases in your earning power moving in the future that were... Councilmember McKenzie, would you care to share what your thoughts are?
I would say like is, one of our top things is to make sure our city buildings are up to code and everything's up to where they are standardized. Then, I didn't, I wasn't sure how you were addressing this, but I thought our water tower's probably the most critical thing that we need to be budgeting for down the road. And also, there's some street projects that are in dire need, and those are ones that have been on the radar, and I think we should continue to follow the process that has been in the works already, not without adding any more major projects, but also to fix the streets that are able to be re-blacktopped or surfaced without digging underground. That's probably one of, there's some streets that are in dire need yet that we can continue to work on, and that'll be part of next year's plan. And then the 27 will be up, Mohawk and Chisholm and that. So at that point, then, now we're looking at 28, 29. So depending on the water tower, where that's going to fall in, do we do a part of a street project in and along that, depending on where the water tower falls in now?
Okay.
No?
Excellent, excellent, excellent.
But I think, I think we could, I think we could work out some plans and keep everything going of what they've got, that they've had in the past planned on.
So kind of, kind of what I'm, what I'm hearing is that, obviously, costs are a big driving factor. Or I'm going to look at it in a little bit different. Affordability. And our infrastructure, I'm hearing that.
Yeah, we fell so far behind over the years, and it's going to take us a while to catch up, and we just don't want to keep falling behind.
And then I, and then I, I think, kind of a part, and I'm going to kind of, when we talk about that median age changes in that, I think, in a certain way, is it speaking to the point that we need to be cognizant of our services? And are we meeting the needs?
Of a younger.
Of a younger generation?
Yep.
I agree. And an older one, too.
And the older one.
Are we stressing?
Finding the right balance.
That's right.
Between our...
Yep.
And again, the city's doing a very good job of trying to plan and to get ahead. You know, when we talk about, you know, one of the components that we look at is that we do have a lower-income community. And with rising costs across the board. People are being hit with insurance, health insurance costs, home owner, home insurance costs, food, you name it. You know, it's not just the property tax component to it. One of the things our city manager has set us on to looking, Ken and myself, and we're in the preliminary look at it, is that started in 2024, and it's continuing now. If you remember that there was a shift in the property taxes where there was an additional 1% that was added to the sales tax in the state of Minnesota, 75% of that, or 0.75% of that 1% increase was going to transportation, and the other 25% of that 1% increase was going to more affordable housing. And so, we, last year, received $85,000. This year, we'll receive $200,000. And it really needs to be for more of the low-income community within your jurisdiction. So what the city manager has us looking at is that one of the components that we see pretty much on a daily, daily basis, and I remember when I gave my department update, the first time that councilmember Woods was there, he called me up and asked me to have a meeting with him. And one of the things that he was totally surprised was how many disconnection notices we end up sending out to our customers. And in our weekly updates, you know, when it comes to billing time, we show that over and over again. And, you know, we're always in the range of 400 or more, and there's always some sort of disconnection. Now, there's a lot of strict rules that are out there, the cold weather rule and so forth. Again, when you see the cutting of finances coming from the federal government, that's hitting the county government, where they have a cap program that helps, you know, individuals of lower income to help with their utility bills. What our city manager has charged us with looking is, is that acceptable to use this money to maybe help at a city level to help out with utility payments for individuals? So we're looking into that, you know, and I think that kind of addresses, oh, that, that was kind of nice. That kind of addresses that service delivery piece to it, that, yeah, we realize our costs are going up, but we're trying to come up with other ways to help all individuals that are within our organization.
One other thing, too, just to kind of elaborate on what we're talking about with expenses and utilities and that, you know, being the mayor, I'm on the account. So they call if there's some check that bounces, and just like today, there was another one, and over the three years, I've almost been mayor. The last six months, I've had more, in the last six months than I've had of all the years I've been here. So that just shows the stress we're having, where people don't have that in their account that they have. So it has ticked up quite a bit.
It has, absolutely. And that's where, you know, we're trying to come up with a potential, you know, assistance for that. Not necessarily going to be the full solution, but at least maybe we can try to help that out a little bit. Because the city does write off, well, you saw, because you passed the delinquent utilities, and that covers everything except for electric, because electric can't be put on delinquent utilities. So that would go onto their property taxes directly. And if they don't want, if they don't pay for that over time, you know, that'll end up going into foreclosure, so forth, da-da-da. Electric, if we can't collect it, we do have a collection company that we utilize, but we end up writing off, you know, probably about $50,000 or a little bit more than that a year. So, you know, that's something for everybody to be aware of. Next question. Are the top five most critical needs that you've just identified facing our community addressed in the capital improvement plan? So this is really to kind of look at what you've said, and your concerns, and I know you're fully aware of them. And then you look at our capital improvement plan, and I did attach it as a, as a document. Are we addressing it? I know there was a lot of talk about, you know, the water tower. The water tower is in our plan. We will have, we will have some cash flow issues in the, in the water because of that. It's, you know, a significant, I think, of like a $5 million project. Streets, we're covering streets in a number of different manners. Cost affordability, obviously, that's not necessarily being directly addressed, because that's a...
Correct.
You know, counterpiece to it. But, you know, kind of your input on to that, and to me, this is more of a yes qualification, no, where are we, what are we missing? You know, kind of piece to it.
I think we're hitting the big ones that we were, that as a group, when we were discussing earlier this year, that we wanted, you know, the infrastructure, public safety, and, you know, I think we're touching on all those things that we were discussing.
So I'm going to, I'm, again, my mind works a little bit differently. I think you're all aware of that. So on a scale of 1 to 10, would you, where would you rate that we're meeting our needs as far as our capital improvement plan to what you've identified as the critical needs for this community?
I'd say a number 2. Number 1 to 2.
Okay. I'm going to say 10's the highest.
Oh, 10's the highest. Oh, the other way.
I did too. I was like, I was going to, I was going to grab Ken and Ken, Ken, take over.
I'm doing something wrong.
I think a 9.
A 9?
Yeah. I think we're addressing it pretty well. Depending on a good plan.
8.
I would say a 7 or 8.
7 or 8? So we're doing a pretty good job. You know, and again, you know, the development of that capital improvement plan goes to our directors. They're the ones who are putting that information in there. And the credit goes to you for your support of us doing that, and obviously, supporting the levies that are needed to back that up. One of these times I'll get it right. So, does the 8% to 10% levy increase that I've been talking about, because we're going to have that 6% kind of as a base to cover the capital improvement plan that we have? And again, there's still going to be cash flow issues, and things are going to have to be shifted a little bit. And then we're going to have, you know, any operational costs. And really, when I'm looking at that 8% to 10%, I'm really looking at it from the standpoint is, there's not going to be additional FTEs added on top of it, because if we have an additional FTE, you know, with benefits, you know, you're looking at probably 1.5% levy increase just to be able to do that. So this is just basically to cover our contracts that we currently have, you know, our union contracts, cost of living, our insurance increases, which again are part of that union negotiation, but we don't control the insurance increases. So it's any other operational costs that may end up coming out onto it. So again, this is more of a, what are your thoughts as far as, does that 8% to 10% levy increase meet the goal? And I'm going to read the goal. The goal that you had set was the number 3, which was the financial stability and cost management. And you were bringing the levy to a more affordable level. Does that 8% to 10% match that? Reevaluating contract services to optimize costs, identifying areas to reduce costs and streamline operations, maintaining financial stability while funding key projects. Again, funding key projects, we can keep adding, and you're never going to achieve, you're never going to even get to the 8% to 10%. But is the 8% to 10% kind of your acceptable range? In your mind, do you want to keep going higher? Do you want us to try to go lower? Again, it's going to be almost near impossible to get below that 6%. So it's kind of discussion of your thoughts on that process.
I think going 8% to 10% is pretty safe, because we can manage year after year of what we've got coming down the pike. And if there's a project that we can't afford, we'll just scrub it until we see fit that'll work into the process there.
Okay. Good comments. So I'm hearing the 8% to 10% is acceptable, but really no more.
Depends where the money's at, at the time when we're doing the budget cycle.
So explain that a little bit.
Well, depends how far, if we're behind on the state aid and things coming in like that, how are we going to be able to afford a major project without all our residents becoming angry on us doing more things than we should be?
And that's the, that's the tough question that's, that's there. If we're faced with some reductions in aids that makes us drive up our levy a little bit higher, then here's the question, because you mentioned a little bit about this, that do we delay a project? Or if it's a project that has a higher priority, which we'll kind of get into, kind of looking at from a categorical standpoint of our CIP, do we, I'll say, I have a dollar to spend. That's all I have. And does it go here? Does it go here? Does it go here? And if it's going to cost me $2, then that means I have that $1 I'm going to put there, but I have to get a dollar from somewhere else. So that means something else has...
Has to drop off.
Has to drop off. And so, in a, in a certain way, what I'm kind of looking at this is that, first of all, two parts. Is the 8% to 10% something that's palatable to you? Considering the 6% for the infrastructure and so forth. And then if it is, is that kind of your cap? You don't want to see it going up above that range. We don't want to see 12s. We don't want to see 14s. We don't want to see 15s. Even if, even if, even if local government aid gets dropped off big time.
Nobody can predict the future, so you got to keep it within means.
Okay. And so, so you're willing to then not do something that is a lower priority to be able to make that happen?
So, on my part, eight to 10 is minimal. I think we can get, you know, that's bare bones, because we have, start out with six.
Right.
So, then it becomes, like we said, as things go on, it's gonna be what don't you want? So, it's gonna have to turn into what don't you want? We kind of did, we kind of went through that cycle with the community center. We knew how much this was, can we afford it, or what are we gonna give up for it? And I think that's just the way it's gonna be on everything, because we don't have unlimited resources. Our taxpayers can't pay it, and we, you know, that type of thing.
So, you're looking at that as really our limit?
Right.
Both, you two?
I'm good with that.
It's gonna be tough, like you said, you see White Bear, I think they went up 17% or something like that. I can't remember, but they're
They've, they've had some, a couple of big years where they were actually in the, in the 20s. I think it was because, again, public safety, facility, infrastructure.
Yeah, we got the ladder truck coming, we have a lot of other things where, you know, you look at your numbers that went by, you got 5 million, you got 17 million, you got, you know, 9 million. And, I mean, it was up and down. I mean, they're really, we had a few years, 31, and 2031, and another one where they were double digits, you know, 17 to 19 million, so.
Yeah, absolutely.
That takes a lot.
Councilmember Wood's thoughts on this?
Yeah, given that we're, I mean, given that 6% is really the baseline that we're starting with, I mean, that only gives us 2 to 4% wiggle room for accomplishing anything. And that's not a lot. Means that we're not gonna be able to get much done in the way of improvements within the community. Well, I shouldn't, yeah, so.
So, the 6% is going for, really for
For the
Yeah, for the, the CIP, which does accomplish quite a bit.
Yes, yeah, sorry. But, so that 2 to 4% just doesn't, it's not a lot of wiggle room for, as things come up, as projects get prioritized. And we've seen the issues with deferring things for too long. And we don't wanna continue to do that to future councils, future representatives for the city. We don't wanna put them in the same position that we're in, so.
So, you're looking at this also as kind of the limit type of piece to it is?
Yep.
Because right now with, with the tip, we, Tiff, we have a lot of apartments, a lot of things that aren't really gonna be paying for many years. So, there is a wind, you know, somewhat of a wind coming through.
Down, down the road.
We gotta try to hold on, and, you know, there's a lot of money that was spent from the city to get the, those developments as far as infrastructure for us to do roads and things like that. So, we put a lot of money out. Now, we're gonna be quite a while before we start getting it back.
Absolutely, absolutely. Again, this is underneath the, your goal of financial stability and cost management. And if you'll write down, if you'll list five areas where you would like to see spending reductions. Yes, yes, please, write them down on your posted notes.
We got fired?
Hmm?
Just a joke. How can do, I don't know.
Do we have to announce these out publicly?
Yeah, I think, I think that's a, that's a good change, like, you may not like it, yeah, that's, that's true, that you could.
Well, I think, you know, like you guys have said, all the departments have, have done their spending reductions to their, what they need to operate their departments. As far as our council people, we don't know the everyday, day-to-day operations and how much goes through the whole city operations. So, for me, I can't say what we need to deduct in spending. But I think what they've done is cutting back on everything has done a good job. They've been able to balance the budget pretty well each year.
No, they, they definitely, they definitely have. You know, I think you've, at least through this year, and it has been in past years too, all the department heads have come and spoke. I personally don't recall where, well, maybe with the exception of one, where you've heard any department head say, I need additional staff. So, I'm gonna take that to mean that they're pretty comfortable with the staffing levels that they're currently at. We have a great group of department heads, and they do manage it very well, and they manage within their, their means. The one that I, you know, I speak to, and I'm not trying to pick on anything, has been police. I think it was the end of last year, they gave a pretty shocking presentation of where they see out in the future, which is something this city, this size, really can't afford. But, again, we go back to that eight to 10%, I'm gonna tell you, there's no way you could ever achieve that, what was presented. And so, it really comes down to that we need to look within that. And if there's something that needs to be adjusted, something has to give up. We have to be able to give something up. And off the top, I don't know what that is, and that's kind of trying to give your, your insights. And I do, like what the city manager says, it's not, would like to see spending reductions, can't tolerate. So, I'm just gonna throw it out there, and I hope you all say absolutely no way. Get rid of our police department, contract it out. Hopefully, you say, no way.
Absolutely not.
But I
I think that's a viable option.
But, but what I'm saying is that those are the tough decisions if we can't live within that eight to 10. If we hear so many residents complaining about the affordability of in the city, we have, and that's, that's what's kind of interesting, and, and I'm not trying to pick on anybody. Did you write, did you write anything down?
I wrote public safety.
Public safety, nothing, nothing.
I wrote a number one.
And, and part of the reason why you didn't write anything down is because we don't have fat
No.
No.
In, in our levy. And so, unfortunately, it would take something drastic. I'm not proposing it, I'm just saying it as part of a conversation that we're having. As long as we can maintain, what I'm hearing from city councils, as long as we can maintain in that eight to 10% acceptable range, which would be without adding staff, we're okay. If we start adding staff, we're never gonna achieve that. And then we're gonna have to start looking at some bigger alternatives.
You talk to other cities, you hear them at conferences and things, talking about doing mergers for certain things that they can double up on, as far as, you know, different, different items as far as the city can do where they could team up with another city. You see that quite a bit now, people are talking about that.
Yep. No, I'm not a big proponent of that, because you lose so much of your identity. And I don't necessarily, I, I think there can be some quick financial gains. I don't think you gain in the long run with those types of pieces. Because, I mean, if you look at cities that have contracted with Ramsey County, they're continuously getting close to double or not double-digit increases on an annual basis for those contracted cities.
And you can't control what they do.
You can't control, and, so I'm not, I'm not proposing, I'm just saying, it was kind of interesting that we didn't come up with a lot of answers, but it really does force us at some point in time that you would have to look at this as being something, I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna call it a, it would have to be something that would be a radical decision.
Yeah, for sure.
And I'm not proposing it, I'm not saying, I'm just, for the conversation, just threw that out there.
The one, the only thing that raises my eyebrows sometimes is somebody says, if we, we get something, well, we can get it and then, you know, you know, share it with other cities. Well, we're the smallest city, so we don't have to have the best of this, so we can share it with somebody. You know, we're at the size where, you know, we'll be the neighbor that hopefully that, you know, we can do things, but, you know, be able to share their resources.
Absolutely, yep. And that's where I, you know, I, I think we do benefit from the, Brian, you're gonna help me out here, with the term that we have both in our police and our mutual aid.
Mutual aid, yeah.
Mutual aid and in our electric, our, our police, our, our fire. And, and we do, we benefit from those. And, and we help, we assist them too, but there, it is very beneficial.
Oh, definitely, especially fire and the police, yeah.
So, I'm, I'm not gonna make you ponder on that one too much more. And so, then, how can we prepare for future financial challenges? And again, you know, if we, if we stay at that eight to 10%, what if we saw a reduction in local government aid? How do we make adjustments to that? Are we willing to postpone, delay, reprioritize some of our projects that are out there instead of increasing beyond the eight to 10%?
There's, there are some things that can be postponed, but there's things, certain things that happen, you have to do it. So, I mean, that's the type of thing where priority, you know, maybe have to reprioritize. We did that with some of the streets, where we had a lot of water main issues, so we bumped a couple around to be able to get to that. We, you know, all of a sudden, you get five or six that are breaking in places, then you have to think, okay, well, we have to prioritize some of this stuff. And that's the, that's where I think the, as a city and a staff, they've done very well is to understand priorities and be able to shift. And be, you know, instead of saying, well, now we'll just do both and just, you know, add on the price. You know, we've had some, we had some residents that have been very upset, because their street got postponed a couple of years.
Yeah.
Well, they would have, it would have been upset if we would have gone through and raised the taxes for more too. So, I mean, that's the thing. It's, you know, understanding and be able to make those tough decisions and try to live within the budget.
The other thing, I, I think we also need to be aware, be, I guess, I guess, be aware of, is, is it viable to spend, you know, $200,000 this year to fix something, knowing that it's only gonna buy us, you know, what is the longevity of whatever money we spend? Do we just knuckle down and spend the, you know, million dollars this year to get it done and get it done right versus just putting a Band-Aid on something to get us by? Knowing that we're essentially just wasting that money, you know, short term.
I think that example is that water in that one street down the way, where we were able to tag them on, because, you know, we have to rip it up later, so. Yeah, but that's definitely, you know, what's our best bang for our buck?
Right.
I agree. Do it once and do it smart. Looks good.
Does that kind of cover that? I, I agree with you. Yeah, we don't wanna be doing something and spending, you know, the $200,000, and then two years later, we're ripping it up.
Right.
You know, if it's gonna cost five times that amount, but it's gonna last 10 times longer, that's the wiser choice to it. So, in a certain way, spend wisely, but we really should be doing some sort of like, I'm gonna call it, cost analysis.
Yeah.
Cost benefit analysis, perfect, thanks, Ken. I know you are, and this is, mic's going over to you very quick. And one of the components with that cost benefit analysis, and I've seen this, again, I've spent a lot of years in government, and one of the things that's always surprised me is that you could go and build a brand-new facility, and no one ever talks about what's the ongoing operational costs are going to be.
There are always more than a project, usually.
Over, over time, oh, it, it is, what are they, I think that what they say is that the building will cost you 1/10th of the costs that it will be for operating that facility over the life of that facility. But it's really coming down to that cost benefit and to look at every component to it. Again, I'm not trying to pick on anybody, but it's just like, if you add an FTE in the police department, then do you have to add additional vehicles? Do you have to add additional body cams? Do you have to additional this and that? There's always more costs that are associated with one just move than just an FTE normally. Place, you know, space for them to sit if it's an office staff and so forth. So, that kind of, kind of goes there. So, you've, you've kind of walked right into that prioritize. So, I need you to rank the CIP categories as to their overall importance. You know, how do you rank, what is one, two, three? What this does is that, yes, when we're faced with those decis, if you want to, if you want, if we're faced with those decisions that we have that $1 to spend, how do we spend that $1? We need some insight on how we prioritize. Who would like to go first?
I will.
Okay. You're number one.
Buildings, facilities.
Number two.
Streets, utilities, reconstruction.
Number three.
Pavement preservation. Utility infrastructure preservation.
Number five?
Capital, technology. Number six is vehicles and equipment. Number seven is ponds, natural resources right now, and then the parks right now.
Is eight? Thank you very much, Councilmember McKenzie, next.
Number one, street utility reconstruction. Number two, building facility improvements. Number three, I'm sorry, should I lean forward, I apologize. Number three, infrastructure preservation. Number four
Number three was what, was that, which one?
Utility, I'm sorry, utility, infrastructure preservation. I apologize, I said, took part of it. Pavement, preserve, four. Five is capital technology. Six is vehicles. Seven is ponds. And eight is parks, playgrounds, and pass, open space.
Councilmember Wood?
Utility infrastructure preservation is one.
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm
Utility.
Utility's number one?
Yep.
Okay.
Number two is streets and utility.
Okay.
Number three is pavement preservation. Number four is parks. Number five is building and facility improvements. Number six is ponds. Right in the middle there. Seven is capital technology. And eight is vehicles and equipment.
When we kind of look at this, I, I think we see our streets and utility, you know, meaning the, the water, the wastewater, and so far, so far, fourth is, is probably our highest. Quickly looking at it, I think our utility is number two. Quickly looking at it, I think our utility is number two.
Building and facility improvements.
I think they're tied.
Toss between that and pavement preservation.
And then I think pavement preservation comes in number four. Kind of looking at that, which is kind of encouraging. From the standpoint is that we're levying for building and facilities to take care of our needs there. Both pavement preservation and street and utility are locked together on the same type of plan, so we're levying for those. And then this is, your utility infrastructure is really coming from our enterprise funds themselves. So the only one that we have dedicated some levy forth is this one. And that's, unfortunately, tied with last. It's like a three-way tie for, I think this is 20, this is 20, and this is 20. And so it ranks kind of the, the lowest, yet we're dedicating levy towards that parks and open space piece to it. So that may be something for future conversations and considerations that we may end up doing. And that, and I think that comes from our, our discussions that we've had already tonight, where that if we have a project in that there's some sort of a cost overrun, that we would end up maybe dipping into the parks or delaying something on the park side to it. Just a, just a thought. And then the last question for the night, and we're going to end it up here, because we've got a, a lot of young, talented individuals coming up next, which is always fun. What do you need from staff to help you make decisions? Anyone want to take a moment and just kind of write down some thoughts?
Just make more better communicating with us.
I think staff involvement in the retreat that we had in the spring was huge.
Hundred percent.
Yeah.
So continuation with the staff involvement in the retreat?
Yep.
Yeah, it was, it was great having them with us.
And then taking that another step further is continued, and I think the city manager does a good job of this, bringing in, you know, during our workshops, I shouldn't say just the city manager, all of you guys do a great job of this, bringing in the different department heads periodically to just give us an update. You know, what's going on in the department, what, you know, what don't we know about that's priority for, that's a priority for you that we can assist with, so.
I agree. And they give us honest upfront, you know, the good, the bad, and the ugly, you know? That's what I really like is, you know what, there's going to be problems, let's hit them head-on. You know, don't tell us what we want to hear, tell us what we need to hear.
And it's better to know about it ahead of time than after the fact.
Yes.
It's easier to address them proactively.
Don't sugarcoat it.
I ain't shared, Odin.
Nope.
It is what it is, let's deal with it.
One, one of the things that I've talked to Jenny, I'm not putting Jenny on the spot because she told me I can't put her on the spot anymore, but would have talked to her about is that when you see a city council item, I, I would like to have, she's checking out to see if I, if we can get a section in there, just like you see recommendations and so forth, that there would have an item of a financial impact. Reason for that is to be able to say, it can be as simple responses, it's included in, in the operating budget.
Hundred percent.
Or it's included in the CIP and it was approved at this amount.
Or neutral, yep.
Type of piece. Here's the reason for that, and I, again, I'm not picking on things, I'm just trying to use examples so you kind of understand where I'm coming from too. That recently, there was presented the 2026 pavement preservation to do the next design phase. And one of the components that was there is that the water part of it is going to, is be higher than we had estimated, okay? I agree with your decision, and it was presented very well to you, but here's a piece that was missing to that. Is that, yes, absolutely, I would do that because the water component, because we needed to replace some of the water main, but here's the piece that was missing for you to make that decision. Do you know what that financial impact will be? Because it will have an impact on that rate for the water. Because it's higher than what we have in the financial plan. And that's where the piece to it is, if we can give you that information up ahead of time. And that's where this dialogue tonight was very important, because what it can also be is that working with the city manager, I can say, "Hey, based upon some of the prioritization, we need to move money from A to B and delay this other thing so it's not having an overall impact on, on what you vision as far as getting done." So that's kind of one thing that, that I've come up with, is that trying to give you a little bit more information. So when you're making those, those decisions, that you're actually seeing that financial impact upfront when you're making the decision, so.
Great.
So, that concludes, we're not going to get to the, the exercise tonight and kind of looking at the thing, I'm going to leave with two, two different pieces later on tonight. You're going to see, and, and I think a presentation from Motorola, talking about body cams and stuff. It's much needed. It's something that's desperately needed in the city. You know, we, we have come with a funding source that'll be there because we paid off the bonds earlier in, this year in February for the public works facility. So we have money left over in that debt service fund, which we have the right to transfer. And so it's proposed to be funded by transferring that. Another good piece to that is that if we pay for it all upfront, instead of paying it over the five years, we will get a return of a little over 4% present value on our money. So it kind of allows us to save a few bucks over, over time, which right now, you, you struggle to find a 4% in how governments can, can invest funds, so I think it's a, it's a really good deal and it's needed. I think before the end of the year, we've had a number of conversations about it. You're going to see the fire department come in and ask for the potential of moving up the schedule on buying the ladder truck. He's done his due diligence, he's going to come in somewhere, all, all total with all the accessories that are needed for outfitting the new rig, I think he's going to come somewhere at about $1,775,000. It's on the CIP out, I think about two or three more years at $2 million. So I think he's going to come in with that. If you decide not to move forward with that, even as of the first of the year, that price would go up four and a half percent, which I think we, the fire chief and myself looked at it, you know, and I think it, it ended up amounting to like about $60-some thousand that there would be an increase into that, and you can anticipate that those increases will be continuously happening. So that'll be an item that'll be brought forth with you, and it's been on our capital improvement plan, it just needs to be moved up. And there are funds in the equipment fund to be able to cover that earlier than, than later. So those are special items to it. I'm going to conclude with, I thank you very much for the honest and open, I think it gives us a lot of direction. I'm going to make, leave these up, I'll pull these tomorrow and start to summarize them and, and get them out to, I'll, I'll sit down with our city manager, and then we'll get them out to our department heads. It kind of sets our direction and prioritization for the future. So I thank you very much for your honest feedback, and always a pleasure.
Thank you very much for everything, appreciate it.
Thank you, Dan.
Thanks, Dan.
All the motion to adjourn?
So moved.
So moved, Councilmember Woods?
Second.
Second, Councilmember McKenzie, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Give us five minutes, and then we'll start the meeting.